Attorney, are you ready?
Does it start doing it? Yep. I think I would.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May the 3rd, 2022, Town Council meeting for the Town of Southern Shores. If you'll all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Counsel, are there any amendments to tonight's agenda? Or may I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Second. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. We also have a fairly extensive consent agenda. Is there any discussion, questions, concerns about the makeup of the consent agenda tonight, counsel?
Nope, I don't have any.
Seeing none, seeing none. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And now, we have our very own David Bradley and his family here tonight for a little recognition ceremony. Here we go. Five years of service, certificate of appreciation, David, Public Works Director. And all around good God. Thank you, sir, very much. You get it in your dinner party. It really is good.
Get the whole family and then get a picture.
Emma. It's been nice to see you. Your shoes are awesome. Thanks, David. Now we have our staff reports. We'll start with our Deputy Town Manager, Planning Director, Mr. Wes Haskett.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor, members of council. With respect to the month of April, for permitting, we had a total of 69 permits issued. Those consisted of 21 zoning permits, 24 building permits, 19 trade permits, four lot disturbance stormwater management permits, and one lot disturbance demolition permit. The total amount of fees collected in April was $21,432.20. With respect to the town's planning board, they will be meeting on May 19th, which is a Thursday, not Monday, due to the election that week. And that will be at 5:00 here in the Pitt Center. The board will consider ZTA 2205, zoning text amendment, application submitted by Stacy LeBlanc to amend Town Code Section 36-202D6. And the board will also consider ZTA 2206, ZTA application submitted by Quayble and Associates on behalf of Jingai LLC to amend Town Code Section 36-207, C General Commercial District. The board may also reconsider ZTA 2108, a text amendment submitted by the town to amend Section 36-165 Regulations Governing Signs. Any questions?
Did you see one with Stacy LeBlanc? Is that up on Hillcrest?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
He won with zoning text amendment submitted by Stacy and LeBlanc. Is that up on Hillcrest? Is that the owner up there?
It's a text, it's not specific to any property. It's to amend the town, the zoning ordinance for its lot coverage requirements is what they're requesting to amend.
Okay.
But she owns property on, I believe, it's one of the avenues.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's not on Hillcrest, but it wouldn't apply just to her property. It would apply to all properties.
I was just wondering, because I couldn't remember the person's name up there.
Yes, sir.
What was the planning board date?
May 19th. And that's, again, that's a Thursday.
Thursday, which is odd, but it's because of the voting taking place on Tuesday.
They have to utilize the room and they have to put their equipment in here. Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Makes perfect sense.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Chief Cole.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The April 2022 police report, as you can see, we had 1,715 calls for service. It's about 200 more than same month last year. As you can see, the crimes that were reported are under the incidents. There were 13 for a total of 24 offenses. We had eight criminal arrests, six of those were for drugs. We had four DWI arrests. Total charges were 16. Under the citations, the officers conducted 69 traffic stops for the month of April, and they wrote 14 written citations and another 31 warning citations. We had no local ordinance violations. And we had five reportable motor vehicle accidents for the month of April. And I just want to give you a real, if it works. No pressure. An update on our canine who will be coming to work on Monday.
Oh, wow. TikTok.
And that's one of the walls they use for hiding the drugs and different types of drugs in. He's been certified in vehicle searches, building searches. As far as drugs, people searches, article searches. He's received just about all of his certifications. And come Monday, he'll be back to work with us and we'll set some stuff up for you.
Look forward to it.
Yeah, yeah, he's pretty excited. And he's a very, very hard work and aggressive, wanting to please his handler kind of a dog. So that's what you want, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Other questions?
Any, I know when this was approved, some of this was for good community relations.
Right.
And is there anything thought about with inviting the public to meet the dog? Or do we not do that kind of thing? Or let them know what's going on, you know?
Yeah, eventually we're going to do that. That's right. And we like to visit some of the local church where the preschools are and those types of things and let the kids kind of interact with it. We're going to be doing a couple of bike roadies and that because of some of the things I think I've shared with you. We've applied for some grants and received some helmets, bicycle helmets that we're going to give away. So we're going to try and do a couple of those things, possibly with the Boy Scouts and the Cub Scouts as well, like over at the school and that. So, once he gets acclimated, we're still waiting for his vehicle to be done. So he can get, right now, we're using one of our pickup trucks. And I think he's going to appreciate the new vehicle where he doesn't have to jump down as far. So, but yeah, that's our plan eventually, is to interact it with the community. Yes, ma'am.
Chief, I had a question. I think you said you had about 200 more calls for service in this last month?
Compared to last year, last April.
Any trend or something that we need to worry about?
No, I could double check, but normally what some of that is, is we have a little bit more as far as property checks, people going out of town and those types of things, especially around spring break and that. So I attribute some of that to that.
Easter was late, too.
Yes, sir.
The death investigation, was that a drug-related issue or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Cole. Appreciate all your and your department's hard work, for sure. Keeping us safe. Chief Limbacher? Glad you're here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, for the month of April, the Fire Department responded to a total of 66 calls. And pretty simple, as always, breaks down into two structure fires. One natural vegetation fire, one grass fire, one trash fire. 41 EMS calls, two motor vehicle accidents, one motor vehicle accident with no injuries, one person rescued from a stalled elevator, one hazardous condition, which basically was a large hole someone had dug on the beach that the deputy chief made them fill back in. So, they were pleasantly happy when they had to fill it all back in. I think the lesson was learned, though. One heat or short circuit, one working wire, two service calls, which were our wheelchair program and our address sign program, one assist invalid, no incident found upon address, which means they dispatched us to the wrong address, one smoke scare, which was related to the 8th or to the 5th Avenue, 5th Avenue house fire, and then the seven alarms, for a total, again, of 66 calls. And that pairs up to last year, two ahead of them, so 64 last year. Any questions on that? She won't pull that up. So just a quick word, I always like to, I talked to the mayor earlier, I always like to talk about things that are kind of unusual in Southern Shores. We don't have a lot of structured fires, which I think everybody's thankful of. But when we do, I'd just like to talk about them a little bit. That is our new deputy chief facing his first fire here, which is quite different from Troy, New York. That's as he pulled up, that's what he saw. So you could see he was well involved before any fire apparatus got there. And you could see the delta, well, the exposure you see in there is to the right of the house, which we would call the delta exposures, the exposure that really, in my opinion, you're judged on. If you can say that, you did a very good job. There's not enough water to overcome the heat on that. It's just a simple GPM to overcome BTU. There's not enough water to overcome that. It'll burn down to our level and we'll get it, but you're not going to get that right away. So, just for information purposes, the deputy chief was on scene in 3 minutes and 39 seconds, and all three engines from Duck, Southern Shores, and Kitty Off all arrived within 38 seconds of each other. So all pretty close. We were very lucky to have a good relationship with our mutually partners because we just cannot do this alone. Matt was quick to pull a second alarm, which brought Collington, Killable Hills, and Maggs Head. And that was more or less a precautionary measure, but it's good to get them coming because there's a time delay because it's a long drive. So, of course, the aftermath, if you just want to go through this, Sheila.
Well.
How old was the house?
I can tell you in one second, hold on. I'm looking at the GIs, hold on one second. I think it was in 90s, 87 or 97, 87, I think it was. So, the real thing you need, that's the house, the exposure, the delta exposure I'm talking about to the right, that was about the extent of the damage. And it's only because the windows blew off from the heat. Once the windows were heated up, as soon as they hit the water to put the outside out, the windows blew out. But again, those guys were very smart about it. They didn't take a line up in the house and make a mess with water damage. They just took a can, water can up and put a little bit of amount of fire in there. Very little damage in there. I spoke to those people when I got back, and I was in that house on Monday. Very little smoke damage, very, very good job by the crews that worked that fire. So, any questions other than that?
Do we know what the cause, is the cause been determined?
I think it's under investigation, but I believe it's probably going to be attributed to a cooking incident. So, I would just say this, summertime's coming, and not that any of our tourists are here to hear it, but you know, you've got to keep your head about you. We all do foolish things sometimes and forget things, and this is sometimes the aftermath of it. But I spoke to the owner of the house today. They were very happy with everything that happened. Unfortunately, it's going to be a little bit of a headache for them to rebuild, but no one got hurt, and really, that's what's important, so.
Very good. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Good work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it so much. Our Town Manager, Mr. Ogger.
Good evening, thank you. Three things I just wanted to briefly touch on. One was to follow up on your last meeting. There were some questions, felt like further discussion, maybe on the small cell wireless. I just wanted to say that Wes and I, we're starting to build a pretty strong network of professionals and consultants, both of the third-party folks and the carrier, such as Verizon and US Cellular. And so we feel pretty good about the contacts that we have and the support that we can get as we're moving forward with small cell. One of the gentlemen that you got an email from that Wes forwarded to you, he's an out-of-town property owner who's in the business. He actually took some time and rode around town and looked at the cell towers, small cells that we have with Wes and I last week, pointing out some good things for us to consider as we're moving forward. We talked about the, at the last meeting, there were questions about the size of the cabinets, and that, of course, depends on who put the cabinet on the pole. If it's US Cellular, there's only room for them. If it's a third carrier, third-party provider who's trying to sell these things, then it's a bigger cabinet, and they're going to make room for others so that they can sell more. But I just wanted to say, we'll continue to educate ourselves and be in a position to try and balance the, you know, walk the fine line between good aesthetics and good service. And one other thing we kind of speculate on is why it seems that NC-12 going up Southern Shores is being a kind of a key for these small cells, more so than you see in other places. And one of the faults there may be that because you've got such heavy traffic on that road, that the two issues that impact where the cell towers go are capacity and coverage. And so they're kind of, that's where they find the biggest need, is through that stretch of town. One other thing we may try to take advantage of is we try to balance the part of good services. There are companies that will actually come out and they'll do an assessment of your town. They'll drive the town, map it out, and see where we do have coverage issues. So my point being, we're going to continue to stay on this and not just look at it. Now that we don't, you know, we have the ability to limit where the towers go, small cell poles go, we want to continue to try and to balance this. Briefly, there's two stormwater projects that we're working on. Oh, yes, sir.
Will they, they will let you know when they're going to put one in now?
Well, the, if we have to get an electrical permit, that's what we find out about the ones on NC-12. And then, of course, they're going to have to go through a pretty, the variance process now if they're going to try and put one anywhere else. I was premature in thinking that I could work with somebody to try and map out the town, and this is where the poles can go to get the coverage and that, because they're just not focused really on us right now. They're trying to deploy 5G to the capacity and coverage issues. And of course, we kind of pale in comparison to those other ones. But I think that day is coming, that we can sit down and try and work with them. And we're in a better position now because of what you did at the last meeting, so thank you. The two stormwater projects that we're working on, the one on Jingai, I hope to bring to you a bid-ready project, either if there's maybe at the mid-month, June, or in a meeting in July, a project that'll be designed and ready to go to bid. The town engineer continues to work on that. We've got a meeting Friday with a property owner to try and, we're going to need a easement for the, where he's putting in a cabinet drain, it's kind of like a fence drain on the east side of Jingai, and draining it out, groundwater, so we can get a CAMA permit, which will take about 14 days to get that. But we've got a property owner that we need to meet with in hopes of getting that easement, and we think we'll be able to do that. The other project on Wax Martel, I think we talked about that at your retreat. I think it would be beneficial if we could get you all, one at a time, two at a time, to be able to go out and actually, when you have time, to meet with the town engineer, myself, and Public Works Director, and try and paint a better picture of what we're trying to accomplish there. Probably should have done that from the beginning, but I feel like we just need to take a step back and kind of look at that project in a little more detail than we have. And in order to do that, I really think you all need to be able to lay eyes on this. It's a lot easier to see it than it is for us to try, for me to stand here and conceptualize it for you. So if you're okay with that, then we'll be reaching out to you with that. Other project, I was hoping to have a number for you tonight, but I'll probably have one for you tomorrow, which means for the Chickahaw sidewalk, the relocation, we've got a contractor who's looked at that. He's got, he's putting together his prices. That's going to move that sidewalk off of the street and move it with some separation for safety purposes and try and get it off the edge of that street. But that project's moving, and I hope, I'll hope to have a price for that, like I said, tomorrow. Wish I could have had it for you tonight, but my point being that we're getting close to being able to do that project. That's all I got.
That isn't the same, any of the area where they're replacing parts of the sidewalk now, is it? On Chickahaw?
No, I don't, no, I think.
I'm on the wrong street. Okay, I'm sorry.
CPOA is replacing.
I know which one you're talking about, yeah.
This is the one up at the light.
This is the light, yeah.
From the parking lot out to the light.
I was on Trinity, sorry. They're working on that, too.
That's the CPOA's doing.
Right, yeah.
Cliff, when are you going to try to get the sidewalk work actually done? What's your goal?
I, I would love to have it done before Memorial Day. I don't think it's a huge project. It's going to take some time. I have concern if we go past that, then, you know, we're going to have to get people across the other side of the street to cross. So if we can't get it done by then, we may have to put it off to the fall. Because I just don't know if it's, the disruption in the summer is a good idea.
Okay.
But I hope. But again, hope is not a course of action.
Right. Very good. Anybody have any questions for Cliff? Okay. Our Town Attorney, Mr. Ben Gallup.
If I can get this close enough so that I can speak into it. Just a little update on the McCurry-Tuck Bridge. You've approved us to prepare an amicus brief. Duck has approved that. A couple of other local governments have indicated interest, and some private entities have indicated interest. And we're working on gathering all those folks and getting their information and getting them lined up. Last week, there was a lot of pressure to get the amicus done because it was due next week, but the NCDOT and Federal Highway Administration have obtained another 30-day extension, which extends ours. So we have until Monday, June 13th, to prepare the amicus brief and have it filed. And otherwise, we're working on it and moving forward.
And don't see any problems with achieving the goal before the deadline?
Don't have much choice.
No.
That's, it's not our deadline. It's the court's deadline, we'll, just like every other, got to get it in when the deadline's there.
Gotcha. Anybody have any questions for Ben?
I don't have a question, but just a comment. Cliff just told me a few minutes ago that two other counties have passed resolutions in support of the bridge, I think Chawan and Camden. So that, so we've got Dare, McCurry-Tuck, Chawan, and Camden. So that's four out of the 10 northeastern North Carolina counties. So I think that's pretty powerful.
And the Tourism Board also approved it.
And the Tourism Board?
The Dare Tourism Board.
Yes, Dare County.
And that's all I have, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it very much. It's time for any general public comments. Deputy Chief, do we have anybody signed up to comment? Does someone want to come and comment? Yes, ma'am. If you'll come up to the podium and tell us your name and where you live and... It's no worries, we're glad to have you.
Thank you. I'm Connie DiManno, and I own the home at 59 Ocean Boulevard. I have owned it since 2004, and I've been coming to the banks since 81. So I feel like I live here even though I'm not here all the time. But one of my biggest concerns about what I see right now is certainly the traffic, you know, on Ocean Boulevard, but more importantly, the speed. And, you know, I drove around while I was here just to see speeds in different areas. And certainly Duck, you know, goes down to 25 miles an hour. Even 158, at some points, it's 45 miles an hour, and that's a four-lane thoroughfare, right? So with the unfortunate death of a person last year at the Chickahaw sidewalk, is anything going on to get this down to a reasonable speed so that our vacationers don't feel at risk? I mean, even right now, I'm trying to go across, just cross the street to the beach, and people don't stop. They just don't stop. And even if someone coming from the north has stopped, you know, I'm not going to risk myself getting in that sidewalk because whoever's coming from the south going north, they could be on the phone, they could be texting, you know, you just don't know. And then, you know, sitting on my deck the other night, I was just watching the cars go. And if you tell somebody they can go 45 miles an hour, they're going 50 easily. And some of these construction trucks, and nothing against construction workers, but they're a big part of the traffic that goes up and down. I mean, they're just hauling. So what are we doing? I mean, a big amount of our revenue is our vacationers, and we're putting them at risk. What are we doing to stop that? Is there anything that we can do with North Carolina Department of Transportation or anything like that to make adjustments, to bring it down at least to 35? Anything?
So Connie, Connie, hi. Public comment is a little, is unique, I guess, in that it's not a conversation. In other words, you're, you have the floor, and you provide your comments, but it's not a time to engage with council members? But since you've never been here before, you wouldn't have really known that?
I did not.
So I totally get that. And because you're here, and we also have our police chief, may I impose on Chief Cole to address some of your comments really quickly? If that's okay? If the chief will come up to the podium, I'm sorry? Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. All right. Yes, thank you so much.
Or you can stand here. Sure. First of all, the, that unfortunate death, that had nothing to do with speed. That had everything to do with disregarding the traffic control devices.
Well, that's unfortunate, too.
Well, it is. But what I will tell you is that the speed limit will be changing, May 15th. The OT will reduce it to 35, just like we do every year. And then the off-season, it goes back to 45.
Okay, I know I'm not supposed to ask any questions, but why wouldn't we? And just consider it, why wouldn't we keep it at 35?
Well, what we've done is, this is all based on data. It's not just something we just decided to do. But when you look at how many accidents we've had compared to when we lower the speed limit, how many minutes or how many seconds it takes or minutes from point A to the duck line when we reduce or change that speed limit, really doesn't make an awful big difference as far as getting to there. So we felt that in the off-season, it made more sense to keep it at 45, just the same as Duck does, you know, at the duck. Up towards Sandlin, that becomes 45 in the off-season, just like several other places here on the beach. And then during the summer, during the tourist season, that makes the most sense to have it at 35, so that people can get a chance to try and get across all the crosswalks. And it's very difficult, I agree. But the smartest thing to do is don't just assume that a car's going to stop.
Oh, I would never. I mean, I would... Oh, I would never. I mean, I have six grandchildren, and they come like little ducks behind me, and there's just no way. But thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, Ty. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Any other public comments? There's nothing on old business, so we'll move on to new business. Town manager's proposed budget for fiscal year 22, 23.
Thank you.
In the budget, you'll see the first part of the budget in the notebook is the manager's message, and I won't read this word for word, but I'll try and go through parts of it. Presented for your consideration is the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023, which has been prepared in accordance with the North Carolina Local Government Fiscal Control Act as required by the North Carolina General Statute, Chapter 159-11. This budget was a result of a great deal of hard work from all of our staff, particularly Finance Officer Bonnie Swain. A few things I did want to point out that points to kind of the state of the economy and, which had a bearing on this year's budget, because we have been impacted both positively and negatively by world events. Since January 21, Leisure and Hospitality Services reported the largest jobs increase in North Carolina. Of course, the impacts of COVID still remain. The war in Ukraine and sanction against Russia have an impact on oil prices, which has greatly impacted this budget. And of course, the February 2022 Consumer Price Index summary indicated an increase of 7.9% over the previous year. This, along with the Federal Reserve raised interest rates, anticipated more hikes expected through '22. But it will remain to be seen how inflation will impact consumer and visitor spending, as all indications point to above-normal occupancy and sales tax revenues this year. Although increases are expected in sales and occupancy taxes in the next fiscal year, a drop in land transfer tax is anticipated. So just a brief budget overview. This year's general fund budget totals $8,706,138, which is a decrease of $115,152, or 1.3% from the current fiscal year. Last year's budget noted, quote, "While a tax increase for general fund expenditures is not recommended at this time, a tax increase will likely be part of the FY 22, 23 budget." The tax rate had not increased for over nine consecutive fiscal years until this current year, when taxes were raised 4 cents townwide to pay for the beach nourishment project. Over those years, the town experienced a decline in shared revenues as a consequence. Last year, a tax increase of 3 cents would have balanced the budget. 1 cent in ad valorem taxes generates $164,000. The manager's recommended budget shows a shortfall of $312,671, and an appropriation from the town's unassigned fund balance, and that amount to balance the budget is recommended in lieu of a property tax increase. The budget also recommends no change in the tax rates already established for the beach nourishment fund. There's a mention of the use of fund balance. Ideally, fund balance should be used for future projects rather than budgeted for annual operating expenses. The current budget was balanced with a transfer from unassigned fund balance in the amount of $1,270,519. But of that, $750,000 went into the Capital Reserve for the municipal service districts. There's mention of the capital improvements. The town council has emphasized the need to address ongoing stormwater issues, as well as the need to address the condition of the Trinity-Juniport Trail culvert. And at the time of the writing of this message, staff is pursuing plans and options for both needs, and will come forward during the next fiscal year to present and request funding. And we believe that funding will be available in the designated fund balance. The American Rescue Plan, on January 6 of 2022, the U.S. Department of Treasury issued the final rule, which governs eligible uses for the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds. The town, the town has been granted $942,717.4. Of these funds, we've received half, which was received in July of '21, and the second tranche is expected in July of this year. We're able to, initially, the guidance was that we would have to use these funds for designated purposes, but that final rule I mentioned allows us to claim this as part of lost revenue, even though the town did not realize lost revenue. And so those funds will be placed in a special revenue fund. We'll use them to supplant police salaries and benefits, and then those funds will be available for capital improvement projects. Beach nourishment, I'll just mention this, but basically, this, it remains the same tax or recommended tax rates that you established when the MSDs were created. And again, all the properties in town will be assessed 4 cents, recommended to be assessed 4 cents, to go towards the beach nourishment project. And the tax rates in MSD 1, which generates $27,195, MSD 2 generates $58,070. Those tax rates are recommended to remain at .715 and .03 respectfully. But it is worth noting, I think, important to note, that you can adjust these rates in any manner to generate the revenue necessary to pay for the debt service. You can adjust those annually. In a minute, you'll hear a recommendation to move forward with the first year of a 10-year CIP for street improvements. The budget recommends second-year funding of $1 million, with the majority of that being allocated towards pavement, pavement maintenance, and remaining towards cap or construction needs. Personnel merit funds are budgeted at $63,528. Merit increases will be given up to a maximum of 2.5%, depending on performance evaluations, and COLA is budgeted at 3.5%. The mandatory town contributions to the state retirement system rose from 11.39 to 12.13 for all general employees, and 12.04 to 13.04 for law enforcement. We are budgeted an approximate 4% increase to our medical premiums, which has much improved over the 10% for the current fiscal year. We have an additional police officer position recommended for funding. We're also recommending that the, as it relates to the town's cafeteria plan, which is a separate written plan maintained by the town for employees that meets the specific requirements and regulations to offset the cost of their dependent care, we're recommending an increase of $25 per month. This would be the first increase to this plan since at least 2009. The consolidated fee schedule, we've, the consolidated fee schedule is a list of the fees the town charges for various services provided by the town. The town council must approve this fee schedule. We are recommending increases to some of our fees to offset the cost of permitting and development. We have $80,000 budgeted for land use plan updates. Last land use plan, as you know, was adopted in 2012. There's also increased funding for IT needs, budgeted for the laser fish system to improve document and record retention, improvements for a more of a municipal-focused website, and security updates, as well as voiceover IP for our phone system. You can see, you've got the increases for each department listed. The ad valorem taxes for the coming year are budgeted at $4,269,803. We, as I said, we're projecting an increase in occupancy of 30%, sales tax of 34%, but we are budgeting a land transfer tax decrease just at 2%. A small decrease there. On page 9, you'll see the difference in expenditures. You'll see the increase for admin department of 10%, primarily due to the IT, 28% in planning and co-development, which is $91,000, $80,000 of which is for the land use plan update, 4% for police, street bridges and canals, that 11%, you'll see in that street bridges and canal. And actually, in fiscal year 2021, we're at 1.1 million and jumped to 2 million in '21, '22, and that's because of the beach nourishment project. And a slight decrease in public works, slight increase in sanitation, fire, and ocean rescue. Listed in also are comparisons of total operating general fund expenditures, expenditures by department and by contracted services. The proposed budget will be posted on the town's website tomorrow, and will be available for inspection at the town hall by contacting Town Clerk Sheila Kane. We're asking that you set a public hearing to receive citizen comment and feedback on the proposed budget at your June 7, 2022 council meeting. And I do want to express my sincere thanks again to you all, as well as all the town staff for making, doing all the efforts to make Southern Shore an even greater place than it is already. I believe you'll have your first budget workshop May 17. That'll be in the fire department due to elections here. And as you start to digest this document, and you have any questions or information you'd like for us to put together in advance of that workshop, please let us know, and we'll have all of that ready for you.
Okay, thanks, Cliff. So May 17 is the standard Tuesday morning, 9:00 a.m., but a different location. Fire Department, thank you, Chief Lindbacher. Public is, of course, welcome to attend, but we would then be having, our first meeting in June would be the actual public hearing for the budget.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the vote would take place on, at that same meeting, is that correct?
It can, yes, ma'am.
Okay. It can, or we can put it off to the second meeting in June. But we need to do it by the second meeting in June for sure.
Yeah, until June 30, 11:59.
Or a special meeting if we so choose. Okay, all right. Anybody have any questions for Cliff right now?
Thank you. A lot of work went in.
Enormous amount of work.
I know what Bonnie's been doing.
Somebody has.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate it. Now we all have something to do in our spare time, which is review the budget, memorize the numbers. We'll have a quiz later. Okay. Everyone, straight on May 17, June 7. So the May 17 is 9:00 a.m. in the fire department? And June 7 is regular 5:30 p.m. here, because voting takes place here on May 17. I think they, polls open at-
6:30.
6:30, I think. So, okay.
Is that going to be an all-day?
No.
Depends how much you want to, that's just how much you want to talk there, Matt.
No, not going to be an all-day.
Don't get too far in the weeds.
Yeah, I have a lunch appointment that day, so we have, we have a deadline. Next on our agenda is our proposed traffic mitigation plan, and in our book, it's on page 58, council. Cliff, I think is going to start us off.
As you know, last Thursday, you had a public meeting, and town staff shared potential options and recommendations for implementing traffic mitigation measures to assist with congestion for the coming season. There, I guess there's a few ways we could go about doing this. The, there's three options that the staff's recommending that we do, and I don't know if you want to discuss each one of these individually and take, you know, give us consensus on these. If the goal is to try and have these measures in place first weekend in June, then there is some time, there'll be some time for us, if we're going to hire, if we're going to buy these barriers and get these barriers, substantial barriers, in place, we need about two to three weeks to turn that around. So some of these measures, if you wanted to implement those, we would need to know pretty soon. But those were recommending closing Hickory Trail at East Dogwood. And that would, when I say the word "close," I guess I need to be, that access from East Dogwood onto Hickory would be blocked for both lanes. The road would be opened by going up Hickory or another way and coming from the north end of Hickory. Same with Ocean Boulevard. We would block both lanes at the southern end, intersecting with NC 12 and Duck Road. And then there's, the third option is going to depend on whether or not you consider doing the cul-de-sacs at each one of the four intersections, CO, Hickory, Hillcrest, and 11th. But we're recommending putting barriers back at these seven, excuse me, eight locations that'll be marked with the same local traffic-only signs. And of course, if you do decide to implement the cul-de-sacs and dead-end effectively those four streets, then the signage on those eight, eight barriers would be different. So those three things, we think you ought to, we think we should, we should try, we should do those things. The other options that we talked about that we put out on the table, but I'm not sure that these are, you know, they're just something to consider in your discussions, and that was, again, blocking the road, closing the median on East Dogwood, closing or blocking sections of town streets and other locations. We talked Thursday night about Porpoise, I think it's Porpoise, Trout or Dolphin, coming off of 12 onto Wax Martel. And then there's some other streets on the east side of NC 12 you may want to consider. We're estimating if we were to put all these measures in place, it's about, it would be about $19,500 for the barriers and the signage that we would need. We'd need a budget amendment to do that. So I'll stop there and see what your appetite is.
Thank you, Cliff. Who wants to start? Nobody?
Is the 19-5 inclusive of the other options?
That would, that would be it all. So it would-
It's inclusive?
Yes, sir. That would include, that's about 40 barriers, and we would, we would work back depending on what you choose.
The closing of Hickory, would that be just on the weekends, or is that going to be the whole week?
It would be, we would, the last thing Public Works would do on Friday would put those in place. First thing they would do Monday morning is to move them. those in place, first thing they would do Monday morning is to move them.
Okay. And Ocean Boulevard, that'd be the same.
Yes, sir.
Schedule.
Yes, sir.
And so the barriers would just be sitting in the right way, but from, for all the other days that we.
That's right.
That just push them over out of the way and then push them over to block what we want them blocked.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Have, have we consulted with our fire and police departments about this idea of the cul-de-sacs? Does that present a difficulty for public safety?
I would say that neither one of them are crazy about the idea, and they would both want me to tell you that it can and may reduce response time. But at the same time, I think they understand the need to mitigate some of the traffic. But if either one of them wanted to speak.
Anytime you close a road, we have things.
But not so much of Hickory and Ocean Boulevard, those that you don't really have heartburn over?
Yeah. If you shut Hickory, it's still, when I myself, if I'm not told yet, for 15 years, you just move it somewhere else. It's still going to cut down our response time, especially with the fire company, with the outside volume, the heat, the wall there. The Hillcrest turned it up and then come back down. Or if they had a older fire truck, they can push the barriers out of the way. They can do that with a new truck. Our honest apologies, anytime you close a road, we, we have to side on, side off.
Gotcha.
What happens if we do nothing? I mean, I'm just throwing it out there.
Well, that, that's been proposed once before some time ago, is everything we seem to do, it's like water, you shut it off here and it moves somewhere else, and we, we just keep fighting a losing battle. I came here in fall of 2001, and then we had a program in the spring of 2002, and you got to remember, traffic volume there is nowhere what it is today. And we had, in this room, we had all various teams, and we had walk the wall with all the little postits, and then, then we prioritized it. And some of the same things we're talking about today, the same thing happened then, and we haven't fixed anything. And I, I just don't know where I go to win this battle. Because they're going to come, people are going to come, we, we don't, we can't control that. But there always that option, and we had a previous mayor indicated, says, you know, I'm tired of fighting this, let's do nothing. Well, we didn't do anything, but we've tried various Band-Aids, blocking here, doing this, doing that, and it just doesn't seem to work. And I, I wish I could, was smart enough to have an idea to just wiggle my nose and go away. Or change, not go away, change.
Are the timing on the lights any different on Ocean Boulevard or Duck, Ocean Boulevard, Duck Road, are the lights green going north and south? Are they any longer in the summer than they are in the off-season? I, I don't know, I'm just asking, is DOT?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, but they always favor.
North, south?
Yes.
Yeah, so when you're on the side street, you're going to be locked in there even farther, longer, essentially, like, you know, three cars get out or four cars get out, I mean, one way or the other. And Leo, I haven't been here as long as you, okay? Only about 20 years, okay, something like that. I mean, it's, it's gotten worse.
Well, yeah, it's gotten worse.
They're coming, whether we like it or not, they're coming, they're building more up north, that's for sure. I mean, they're passing through town, and we're trying to do everything we can to make it as pleasant. I think, I think the campaign that the mayor's been on, making the video, telling people to stay on 158 and 12, is it not perfect, that's for sure, but I mean, just encouraging that, telling them even that the lights are going to be timed a lot longer for them to get up the road, which it sounds like they might be, it's not, not misinformation, might try something. I mean, I, I'm uncomfortable blocking a street, I'll be honest with you. That, that really, you know, I'd hate to think of anything happened to somebody because emergency vehicle couldn't get there via police, fire or EMS from Deer County. So, I mean, that's, that's, I'm really, really uncomfortable doing that, and if we do end up blocking something, I think it's something at a minimum.
Yeah.
That, that's my two cents.
Well, I'm good, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, I wanted, I think we need to, you know, as part of the education program with trying to make tourists understand what they're at, I believe Elizabeth, you've used this term, we're a community, not a cut-through town. And somehow, I think we got to try to market that, that statement. Now, whether it works, I don't know, but it would be worth a try of somehow, any publication we have, and maybe we can get the property management group, Willie Kelly's group, to help us do something like that, at least get it out there that, you know, we're not a cut-through town. Now, you know, you can lead people with water, but you can't make them drink.
Just, full disclosure, that was Paula Sherlock's tagline.
Well, whoever's.
We're a community, not a cut-through, I just started talking about it and gave her the credit, so let me give her the credit now again.
You know, as far as not doing anything, I, I have some real concerns about the aesthetics of all of this and how this is going to look with barriers, have concerns about the public safety areas, you know, impact, and I'd like to see us do as minimal as we can to try to mitigate this. However, not, you know, I ran for this office last year, and the number one thing I heard on every street that I walked and every community event I went to is what is the town council going to do about this traffic? So I think not to do anything makes us look very unresponsive to the community, but there certainly aren't any perfect solutions here.
Well, the thing we were going to have to all understand is, you know, some of the people are going to like what we do, and there's going to be others chastising us for it. So, you know, no matter what route we go on any of these proposals, there will be people who love us in some areas.
I'm not in favor of the cul-de-sacs. I think one through three.
Not one through two, don't you?
One through three in our town manager's plan seem to be not minimal, certainly, but doable, and we can stop doing it. If it really doesn't work, the no left turn didn't seem to work.
If, well, I think if, Cliff, correct me if I'm wrong, you know, we can start some of this, but if we're, get tremendous pushback, we can always stop it.
That's right.
So, in light of what Chief Cole says about closing off roads and also Chief Limbacher is, is always a risk, would we prefer to just only do number three that has the eight, one lane of traffic, local traffic only sign locations, rather than closing Hickory at East Dogwood and Ocean Boulevard at the southern intersection of NC 12 and Duck Road?
I think Hickory popped up out of a request of residents on that street.
Yes.
And I don't know if they've managed to gather a petition or given unanimous support to it, because that would motivate me whether we were to close that. The end of Ocean Boulevard, I could potentially see an accident.
But we did have that Thursday meeting, a person from Ocean Boulevard, and, you know, his concern wasn't the volume of traffic.
Speed.
As it was, speed.
Yeah.
Race seemed to get up to Hickory to turn.
Although I don't think he had any objections to us putting up the.
No, no, he, he, actually, he was in favor.
I think he was very much in favor of that. I mean, the reality is, you can turn and get on Ocean Boulevard just beyond that intersection.
Right.
So, it might be a waste of barriers.
Yeah.
In reality, yeah.
Well, might be something.
They might have enough to try it out and not have to buy specifically for that location. Other options, it seems like their consensus is to not do any of the cul-de-sacking, which I would agree with.
Doesn't seem to be a.
As a spin ball brainstorm, it comes up, but I mean, as a practical, whether or not we're going to actually move forward, that I think there's too much risk involved.
I think we're all a little bit concerned about the risk.
Yes.
Yep, too much short-term pain for any long-term gain.
Mm-hmm. I do think we need to emphasize the messaging about the traffic lights on Duck Road, because I really think that people need to know that if they, they cut through, they're going to get stuck, and that's not what they want to do, they don't want to get stuck. And that's certainly what we're going to put a lot of effort into this year as opposed to previous years. That's one thing that we're going to be doing differently is messaging.
I think if we put these local traffic only barriers, I mean, I think it'd be supportive of, of some of the people that had a lot of the issues, but I think their first question is going to be, why did we not do the no left turn, or why are we not proposing that? And I don't know if we want to elaborate on that. I have the manager.
Cliff, will you elaborate on why we're choosing not to do the no left turn?
That, that, well, I'll start by saying the intersection's in the jurisdiction of another town. It's not, so it's not totally, it, it takes three parties to, to agree to that, and there's not three, there's not a three-party agreement. It takes the town, both towns and DOT, and DOT is going to want to see strong support to do that, and, and that, that support's not there, and it's not there because of safety concerns primarily, and actually, that is probably the, the biggest overreaching reason, and anything else I tack on to that is not as impactful as the concern. And, you know, we, we did, we, we've taken, Chief Cole's been taking numbers for a very long time, and it, it, it would have an impact one weekend, but then it wouldn't have an impact the next weekend. And I, I shared this on Thursday, that we, we did the no left turn eight consecutive Sundays. The first Sunday, we didn't do it, we had less traffic, less, less traffic on South Dogwood than we did when we had the no left turn, if that makes sense. So, and, and you, you just, you couldn't look at it and definitively say that the, that it had the impact. And, you know, you heard, you heard agreement with what I just said, and you heard disagreement, a lot of disagreement with what I just said on, on Thursday night.
Well, when we looked at the streetlight data, we had a comparison to a year where no left turn, no, no left turn was, was enacted, and you had about 18% cut through on South Dogwood. And in 2021, when we were pretty aggressive, no left turn, you had about 18% cut through on South Dogwood.
So essentially, no, no impact at all.
On a grand larger metric, from the hours of 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, at least according to the cell phone data, it didn't look like it. I think it made a big psychological impact and not necessarily a physical impact.
That's what I think, too.
And it didn't alleviate the problem at the other end that COs and Wax Myrtle.
No, that was what we kept bucking up against, they were still stacking in Hillcrest and stacking in COs, and some of the comments of the residents that live up there appreciated the efforts of the local traffic only signs, and I wish it would, it was a cure-all, but the cure-all is removing 3,200 cars from that.
From Saturdays.
From Saturdays, which is staggering change over day with our rental agencies or a bridge, so.
Yep.
It's my two cents.
So, so we're not in favor of closing the cul-de-sacs, is that right?
I don't think so.
I think that option is.
Can we agree on that?
We're agreeing on that, I think we're agreeing on everything that's under number three. The question is, do we want to include number one and number two?
Number one for me really depends on the residents on Hickory, I mean, and almost like unanimous support for it.
So we could poll the residents on Hickory and get them to?
They've asked for it, I don't know if it's unanimous, and, I mean, I don't use that cut through personally, so, I mean, I know a lot of people do, vendors do, so we'll have some grief, but if the residents on Hickory.
They've been asking.
There's some blind corners on that road, it's an awkward turn anyway, I could, I could support that. I don't know how I feel about number two, I could be convinced either way, probably.
Do we want to authorize the town manager to use his discretion after he checks in with the residents on Hickory for number one, and also his discretion for number two? We can try it, if it doesn't seem to have any perceived benefit, we just stop, or do you want to just take number two off the table?
I can say number two.
We do have a.
The speed at which you come in on that intersection and find out that it's blocked when your map is saying it's not.
Well, they creeped up to the intersection at five miles an hour.
Yeah, the speeds.
That's actually a good point there.
The speeds, except it.
I'm imagining a freeway, but it's not.
Yeah, you know, the other thing is the traffic.
Except at night.
Traffic's coming earlier and earlier, too.
Yeah.
I mean, you try going to duck at 8 o'clock in the morning on Saturday now, and, or Sunday, and it's bumper to bumper. I mean, it's, it's backing up, so the folks are coming, coming earlier. What was this, do you say you've talked to residents on Hickory and they are?
Over the year, three years ago, they, they actually asked to cul-de-sack their street, I mean.
Yeah, they wanted to do it up at.
A few of their residents.
Hillcrest.
Yeah.
They wanted to cul-de-sack it, make it a cul-de-sack.
At the top end.
Yeah.
Which I think when we looked at that, we thought that might create a lot of turnaround issues, just like the cul-de-sacks.
Well, yeah, if we blocked at the top, they'd have to turn around and come back down again.
Yep.
So you doubled the, the issue.
On a blind corner.
Cliff, Cliff, is, are there any alternatives to putting these out on Friday night and not picking them up until Monday morning?
Yeah, if that, if that's, we can work that into the public work schedule, I mean, that, that.
For those two.
We can find out, we can make it happen, we can find a way to make that work.
I mean, for those two road closures, because I, I do agree, blocking that on Friday night all the way to Monday, that seems like a long time to have to block those.
We'll, we'll, if, if that's the direction.
Saturday morning?
Saturday morning and take it off Sunday night or Monday morning?
Or just Saturday.
I'm sorry?
Maybe just Saturday.
Maybe just Saturday.
Maybe just Saturday.
Yeah.
Can public works do that?
Somebody can.
Somebody can, normally it's overtime.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Comp time, comp time.
Civilian volunteer corps.
It.
You can do comp time.
I can figure it out.
You can figure it out?
I know a guy, there's got to be a guy, I mean, we can, we can make it happen.
Yeah.
I got an idea.
That, that I believe.
No, I'm not going to go do it.
So, so are we consensus on, on blocking the two roads for just Saturday and then putting the single lane blocks and signage out on the other eight intersections for the standard Friday evening to Monday morning?
Local traffic.
I think, again, I would just reiterate, for one, I would like to see citizens buy in from that street, people who have residences on that street.
Okay.
And the reason is that, especially closing Hickory, that's going to impact quite a bit of traffic flow from people throughout town, and it's going to blow back on us, and I would like to be able to say that the people on the street want it.
Why don't we allow?
Otherwise, I probably wouldn't do it.
Why don't we allow Cliff to make it, make the, do the survey or get their input, and then depending, he could either say yea or nay.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, just authorize the town manager to use his discretion based on his knowledge of how people feel on Hickory and also on Ocean Boulevard about blocking those roads on Saturdays, and then authorize number three, all, all the options under number three.
But I think you've said that time is sort of an issue here, I mean, how, I mean, people have a chance to come to meetings, they have the chance to call council members, this is, I mean, how are you, can you get this back and, can you get this back in a timely manner? Are you going to look at a simple vote of the residents on that street? I mean.
They've been somewhat organized already, I think it would be.
Hickory will be less of a challenge than.
There's not that many residents on Ocean Boulevard.
Yeah, it's going to be a challenge to.
You don't have any full-time, do we?
On Ocean Boulevard?
There's a few.
Few, but not that many.
Not past the 12, not past the triangle.
That, that's going to be tough.
One of them was at the meeting, one of the full-time residents.
Yeah, Dave Mackey was, was one.
But he doesn't live there.
Yeah, he doesn't live there.
No, but he was in favor, but.
Some of the people up on Purple Martin and Mockingbird, there's a handful up there. There's a gentleman in the crowd that lives over there.
All right, we need to move on, I think, make a motion, make a decision, what do we want to do?
If, if what I hear you saying, I don't know that you need to, if, if I've got consensus to, based on the feedback I get from the folks on Hickory, we'll determine whether or not we barricade that, we're going to go ahead and put up the same local traffic only, those, those would go up if okay on Friday, and, because there's so many of them. And then I'll try and get, gauge some type of a response to one on Ocean Boulevard. I can get the one on Hickory. I can get the one on Hickory, I think. I, Ocean Boulevard is going to.
Did we put a partial sign up at the end of the year last year on Ocean Boulevard?
We, we put the same one up that we put in the other location.
Local only.
Which, we could do that.
Yeah.
I'm fine with leaving it to Cliff, let him, let him throw him to the wolves.
But if that's the consensus, then I don't know that I need a.
If the, yeah, if the, if the local traffic only works better on Ocean Boulevard than the full block, then I think that's the, the fallback position.
My message, I guess, would be Cliff makes a decision, I'm here to support his decision. We've empowered him.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's what we're doing.
Cliff is available, I'll go with you to talk to residents.
Exactly.
Seriously. Okay, just call me.
Okay.
Okay.
And that, they probably have a, depending on, I'll have a clearer picture of the cost now also, that I'll have to bring to you at the May mid month.
Okay.
But.
Timing wise of getting these things ordered and getting them there.
Yeah, it's got to.
Need to order them.
Can you, can they, can they approve a budget amendment now up to a certain amount?
Yeah, if you could do that, then I could go ahead and get these ordered.
We need to make a motion to approve a budget amendment in the amount of?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed? I'm sorry?
It's not going to be this much, but 15,000.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we approve a budget amendment not to exceed 15,000.
From one side, from bounds.
From one side, from bounds.
To streets.
From the streets.
And I'll second it.
That's a motion and a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. We have a plan. Think we're doing pretty good. Lemon Branch Contractor Award, that's page 19.
We're asking, we've got in your packet, you'll see, we had, I'm sorry, I'm trying We had three bids we received on the second advertisement. Two were responsive. We considered one to be not responsive because it came in late and it was incomplete. The three bids we received were from SWD, Admiral Landscapes, and ATX. The non-responsive was Admiral Landscapes. Their bid was $275,000. We had the one from ATX was 164, and the one from SWD is 125. Of the two, we, we, after evaluating these and looking through the, the criteria, the responsibility, what it takes to do this job, we can, we consider or recommending that you accept ATX. Now, that's the high, that's the higher of the two, but we feel like, based on the job requirements and the, from the responsible side of the responsive responsible bids, that we need to, we need to award this to ATX. Concern being the capacity to be able to do this job with equipment and manpower and experience and so forth. This is a, you know, as you know, a important service that the town offers, one that the citizens rely on and come to expect. So we feel good about the recommendation.
Thanks, Cliff. Any questions for Cliff about the staff recommendation for ATX for the Lemon Branch contract?
Good.
They were.
They were. That's for year two.
Apologies.
Yeah, that's correct. Thanks, Bonnie.
Good catch.
Do we have a one year contract now? So now we're proposing two year?
This would, we're recommending a two year contract with yearly renewals.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to accept staff's recommendation?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Accept the recommendation of staff.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Cliff and staff.
We got the street improvement.
Streets. Consideration of contract awarding Southern Shore Street Improvements, page 63 in your books, council members.
Again, that we received, we advertised bids. We didn't receive any bids on the first advertisement. We re-advertised. We had three addendums along the way. And on the second advertisement, we received one bid from Fred Smith. That bid is for $916,000. In your packet, you'll see all the streets, the segments, beginning and end, for all the streets that will receive either the full depth patching, the mill, or the surface patching, and then as well as the work on the rebuild on Soundview. SEPI has, in your packet, you'll also see a recommendation from the SEPI, the engineers, who are, they, they list three things that you may consider in lieu of accepting this bid. Staff's recommending that we, that you grant, award the notice of proceed, and we enter a contract with Fred Smith for this work. The three things that they, if I recall, the three things, one were to advertise for a longer period. This project right now is, from the notice of award, is told sometime, I think, mid-December for a completion date. I don't think we'll get a better price by extending this. If anything, it may be more because of the volatility. There were two other.
Separate the projects.
Separate them into small projects.
Get DOT to do it.
Yeah, and I think that the, the separating the two projects, again, I don't, I don't think we'll get a better price.
Yeah.
Because of the, partly because of that same volatility, but also it's either going to be Fred Smith or Barnhill. So if we divide it, you know, we may see a higher cost, because those are the two that would likely bid on these. And then with the DOT work, if you've been out on, I don't know where they are, that there's similar work that Fred Smith's doing already for DOT. But again, that would take time, and we'd have to go back through. And, and I don't know how far along they already are in that process, but if you drive down the bypass, you'll see a lot of patching that's been going on already. And so we feel like we need to get going. We feel like, you know, it's, we've got the funds budgeted to do this. We're asking for a 15% contingency, and that's mainly because of the, this being the first year that we've done this, not knowing what we don't know yet, and, you know, concerns about what the contractor may run into as far as when they do the milling, if, what type of stone or ABC or material has to go back to compact. But a lot of that's accounted for, but typically, I mean, I think we'd see somewhere around a 10 to 15% contingency anyway. But what we're asking for you to do is authorize the town manager to award a notice of proceed and enter into a contract with Fred Smith to perform this work.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract with Fred Smith for Project 2204.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yes, so do I. Go ahead.
So when we do that, let's just say it works the first year. When will we go out for bid for the second year? And then who's going to, is SEPI going to tell us that these guys did a good job? I know there's nobody else, but I mean, are they going to tell us they did a good job? So go for the second year or what? Is there a process?
They'll have an inspector here on site to.
All the time.
That we're shadowing and, and, you know, we're going along with them to do these inspections. You make a good point, because you don't really, you will be rebidding this almost immediately.
Right, because this is going to be up in December, and this is in May.
Right, so we'll be, and so the, the test, the, you know, it's a short turnaround review. And that, that, you know, that's a good, good point. But I, I think you'll evaluate this based on, you'll hear a lot of response about the.
Citizens?
The, the way it looks.
Okay.
But if we're doing our job and SEPI is doing their job, we're accepting quality.
Right. I mean, I, I agree with the short time period. I just want to, going forward, this is a 10 year project, we think, is what it is. So.
Yeah, and, and I, I wish I could tell you exactly, but if you look at it, the, the patching is, it's heavy in the first two or three years, but then we move away from that and get into overlay.
Inspection road. Yeah, okay. All right.
When, when would the second, would it be another April or March target or?
No, we could do it, hopefully, we do it earlier.
In January.
We can get started earlier.
Or even.
Yeah, because we could do a bigger window then, maybe.
Yeah.
And maybe then we'd get a better price.
I do think this, this first year seems like the opportunity to learn a lot, both from a staff perspective and also from a council and resident perspective, because you're right, this is something new and different and.
And it's also going to be new for the contractor, too.
And new for the contractor. So hopefully, we will like it, but we also will have the opportunity to make some changes if we see that we don't like it.
Evaluate the performance.
Could he start work? I mean, any indication when they can start?
No, they, you know, the liquidated damages are pretty hot.
Okay.
So, I mean, they, they're going to have to start in time to be done in December. But I'll find out, and as soon as I know, I'll share it with everyone.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to be able to get this started so the funds will be, would be used in this fiscal year or will it move to the next fiscal year?
Some of it will be paid. We'll have to carry over the funds budgeted in this year into next.
Okay.
Okay.
I go back into the.
It won't all be.
Come back out. Yes.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town manager. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for ZTA 2204, which I will now hand over the meeting to our town attorney, Ben Gallo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a public hearing, a legislative public hearing for ZTA 22 dash 04, which is an ordinance that amends the density and dimensional requirements for RS8 multifamily dwelling units in the general commercial district. The legislative public hearing, first, we will have Mr. Haskett provide a staff report. And then if there's anyone in the public who would like to speak to this matter, we'll ask that you raise your hands, and I will call on you and have you come up to the podium. And we will start with Mr. Haskett.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Good evening. Good evening again, Mayor. Next item on your agenda is ZTA 2204. This is a zoning text amendment application submitted by the town to amend Section 36-207B4. The proposed amendments are being proposed by town staff to establish a maximum density requirement of eight dwelling units per acre in the C General Commercial District. Currently, Section 36-207B4 establishes that detached, single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, multifamily dwellings, and accessory buildings are permitted in the C General Commercial District according to the dimensional requirements of the RS8 multifamily residential district. The dimensional requirements of the RS8 district are established in Section 36-203D, and they address yards, lot coverage, lot width, building height, et cetera, but they do not address density. The density requirement for the RS8 district is actually found and established in Section 36-203A, and that is at eight dwelling units per acre, which we feel should also be required for residential development in the C General Commercial District. Town staff has determined that the proposed amendments are consistent with the town's currently adopted land use plan, and town staff recommends approval of the proposed ZTA. The town planning board unanimously recommended approval of the application at their April 18th meeting. And one thing I've kind of wondered is why wasn't this included when the dimensional requirements were put into place? And the only thing I can think of is that it was an oversight, because we, there should be some form of density, I think, in the commercial district.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Haskett?
I do. Wes, so if I own a property that's zone commercial here in town, currently, I can develop it as 100% commercial, or I can develop it as 100% residential?
Yes, ma'am.
And there would be no limits on density for residential?
There would be no limit on the density with respect to how many dwelling units per acre. You would be like, you, you could only have, you don't have to meet lot covered setbacks, building height, et cetera, parking. But there is, there is no density currently if someone applied.
Do, do you think that our town's commercial zoning ordinances need to be looked at and reviewed? Or do you think they're in pretty good shape, other than this particular amendment that you're proposing for us to consider tonight?
They've been updated periodically over the years, and I think we've had discussions about the possibility of looking into aesthetics and commercial design standards. I think that's something that's been mentioned and something that we could explore. The other, when I mentioned earlier in my report, is a request from Gene Gotti LLC, and that is a, essentially, it's a mixed use development concept. And that's not some, that's nothing that has ever been proposed in the town that I'm aware of, anyway. But as, as far as things to look at in the commercial district, nothing immediately comes to mind, other than the commercial design standards.
Okay. I just took a minute to review our land use plan vision statement and the words that it uses. It describes our community as being served by a small commercial district. Well, it describes a lot of stuff about our town, but it's pertinent to what we're, our discussion right now. Small commercial district located on the southern edge of town, which focuses on convenient shopping and services. And I don't think when the town's commercial zoning unit or, or ordinances were put together, I don't think anyone thought about residential, because it was the commercial place in town, not the residential. So, but clearly, you could develop it as 100% residential. Some of our commercial development is 36 years old. I'm looking at you, Marketplace. I think it's possible to imagine that in the future, there will be redevelopment that consists of other uses in addition to convenient shopping and services. I've certainly had people talk to me over the years about, I wish there was this and I wish there was that in our commercial zone. So, anyway, I just want to throw it out there for people to start thinking about. It's, it's something that's probably in our future, is a reimagining of our commercial districts, all those areas that are zone commercial.
So does this mean that the guy who owns the food line, shopping center, we can put houses up with the density on a piece of land? I'm, I'm, I don't know.
Currently, if you were to tear, if you were to tear down all, if you're to tear down all the commercial.
Yeah.
And build multifamily houses on that property, there is no density cap.
Yeah.
This is instilling, this is instilling a density cap.
But if he's got room over there now, he could put houses up.
No, not currently.
No, he can't?
Not with the commercial parcel developed as.
He can't have mixed, is what you're saying.
Currently, we cannot mix residential and commercial. The guy over at Food.
It's a lot of stuff to think about.
There's only.
Nobody want to do it, but I mean, you know, I mean.
There are three properties in the town that have residential development, and that is the three pieces, three houses right here, just to the north of the gas station. Those properties are zone commercial, and those were permitted years ago when the town allowed large, single-family dwellings. They were permitted with 10 bedrooms, which is a higher density.
Uh huh. And the other two, and that's it, right? And the other two, and that's it, right?
It's those three houses.
Yes, those three.
So, where Southern Shores Services, that's commercial there, across, next from Starbucks, going north, is that a commercial property there? Is that where they have their service center?
Next to Starbucks.
Yeah, Southern Shores Realty?
Going west.
Yes. That building there is commercial. Yes, that property, next to, immediately next to the Marketplace property.
And the ones before Martin's Point.
That is in the town's extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's not within the corporate limits of the town limits, but we exercise zoning and development requirements over them.
Okay.
They're subject to our zoning and building requirements.
Wes, did the planning board discuss this amendment in light of issues like affordable housing?
With this, in this text amendment, there may, that subject did not come up, that I recall.
That came up in another discussion.
That was in another discussion.
Board meeting, that came up.
Same meeting.
Another discussion, it was during that, yeah, they talked, there was an advocate for that.
And you would want a greater, much greater density.
Greater, much greater.
Make an impact on affordable housing. Eight units per acre ain't gonna do it.
No.
It would create more housing stock.
Yes.
But not so much.
Would make more varied investment potential.
Yeah.
Potentially revitalize commercial.
Right.
Won't touch affordable housing. Unfortunately.
I think we're done, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anyone else have any more questions?
No.
No.
Anything else, Mr. Haskett?
Thank you.
Does anyone in the public wish to speak to this zoning text amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
First meeting.
I'm sorry. I appreciate what you just shared. As, as a member of the community for almost 40 years, not living here full-time, but definitely here a lot, I've been on several grassroots committees, if you will. Land use, looking at the land use plan that we have for the community, what the original thoughts were for the community, all that kind of stuff. And then hearing about the traffic patterns that we're trying to deal with, which you obviously understand that. Taking this type of a movement on potentially higher density, I mean, I even look at the house that was built at the corner of Chickahawke and Ocean Boulevard. They said it was a single-family, I'm not convinced of it. But I just would ask the council to be very deliberate in the way this type of a change for this community, and what it would mean to this community. It, it's, it is not within the original intent of Southern Shores. So, my ask of you is just to be very deliberate in the way you would handle this type of a topic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Mike Stone, I live at eight San Feller Court, Southern Shores. I've lived here for over 52 years, lived in Currituck for a little bit. Saw the place grow, saw the place develop. Obviously, I have some hidden knowledge, and my family does, of what's taking place here. As it states in probably the town's ordinances originally, when it, building things were set up here prior to the town existing, they said, we don't want a house in this town smaller than 1,200 square feet. There was no limit on the size of this house that was being built to start off with. And I'm not saying I'm in favor of large houses. I'm just stating that as a fact. When it comes to what the plans were for this town and such, the original commercial district that was planned for this town was in the area where the East Dogwood Fire Station is. I have plans, you know, blueprints and street maps showing that at the time. After that fact, you're talking about various districts, commercial and RS zones. The how, the town had various RS zones, and up until maybe the 80s or so, when the town was formed, the district across from Duck Woods, Gingite Lake, on both sides of it, were zoned RS10, as was the ability to build in commercial was zoned RS10. I'm not sure of any lot coverages at that point, because I haven't researched that. I really haven't researched rest of this, because it's just general knowledge. But I'm, I've always considered what, how things were zoned for the commercial as being RS8. So, I'm, you know, when we start talking about density, wanting to change it, it's like, sometimes people put in terms wanting to be able to say something else. So, I almost have a question, it's like, okay, what are you referring to as the density? Is it just, just simply eight units per acre? Which is what we always assumed it to be, but, and right now, it's showing 40% lot coverage. What's in somebody's mind about changing? It's like, okay, I'm saying this because I own all this property right here. I own that property over there next to the Marketplace. Are we looking at trying to downzone what we have, what we've owned for, you know, a long time, 20-some years? Where the town police station is, we used to own that. It used to be a block, concrete block, cinder block building. And just curiosity, what is the plans, what is the thought behind all this? Because it all affects us. And this little commercial district, take a look at the four miles of Southern Shores, how much is this little sliver of land? Everybody's worried about a little sliver of land right here compared to the rest of the town. And I'll also say, I'm not, no, everybody bought on Hickory, they knew that was a drive-through road. No, you know, some that just moved there recently. I've had a conversation with them, they knew it when they bought there. Now, they complain about it, and they knew what everything was. That's the road I take all the time. So, you're not just affecting the people that live on Hickory, you're affecting all the rest of us that live in the dunes on East Dogwood, because that's one of the roads that we take, because we can't turn at East Dogwood at the light, or cross over, because of the traffic coming from both directions. We have to go farther up in Southern Shores, so we can take a right-hand turn for myself to get home, because I live on the ocean side of Duck Road. So, we're all affected in different ways. And I'm, if you block Hickory, I'm just gonna have to be on somebody else's street. That's all it comes down to. But I would like to know a little bit more about density, about what are y'all truly thinking about that? I mean, I don't think it means anything, but I would like to know. All right?
Anyone else from the public wish to speak to this zoning text amendment? Mr. Haskett, do you want to say anything else? Board have any more questions for Mr. Haskett?
Just to clear this up, because I'm a little confused after hearing some of the comments. Where's Wes? Wes is behind the podium. This, this amendment is to bring this, these pieces of property in conformance with the land, the existing land use plan.
The land use plan addresses the town being low-density. And if you look in, I forget which page it's on, but there's a section in there that states that an incompatible use in the commercial designated area on our future land use plan map would be density or a residential low-density. So, in one way, by allowing RS8, eight dwelling units per acre, that would be consistent with the land, that is consistent with the land use plan. But the reason we're proposing this amendment is because right now, there is no density requirement.
No density.
No density.
It could be 100 units per acre under our existing ordinance.
Right.
I, I didn't, until Mike spoke.
Any other questions for Mr. Haskett? Thank you. We'll close the public hearing and give it back to the, to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Ben. Let's see, I think we're gonna have a few more comments. Matt, you were in the middle of saying something.
I didn't actually see this amendment as a downzoning until Mr. Stone made his comments. I thought it was more bring it in lines with the other dimensional requirements that already stated the RS8 district. So, that was just something that gave me a pause for a moment, because like I said, that, the rest of our commercial district currently calls out dimensional requirements related to the RS8, so it seemed natural to apply density restriction that relates to the RS8 to follow the intent of what was originally written. And again, it wasn't until Mr. Stone's comments that I thought of it as maybe a downzoning of our commercial district, but I don't have an answer, it's just a thought that came to my head.
No, no one ever put it in those terms until Mike spoke.
Yeah, no.
Any other comments, questions?
One more comment is, this, this is a restriction of density that isn't currently there. You can have greater density than this amendment says. Commercial districts could have 800 units per acre currently.
Currently.
Make sure that's clear. This is, this is less than that.
I'm trying to phrase this. Does, how does this then address mix use of?
Not at all. Doesn't touch it.
Doesn't touch it, okay.
Yes, only for those parcels zone commercial, correct, Wes?
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion, counsel? Were you ready to make a motion?
Think so.
Let's see. The motion would be.
To approve.
To approve ZTA 2204 as presented by staff. Also moved. Do I have a second? I'll withdraw my motion. David, do you want to come up to the microphone?
David Neal, Wild Swan Lane. I don't understand what's happening in Mike's point. So, could, can someone simply and clearly say what is going on with this commercial district? I know that Saga wants to do something up there, and Mike has property here. There's a limit to what they can do, is that correct, or not? And what is changing with this amendment? Can, I'm just asking a question, it's not clear to me at all.
Okay. Wes, do you, do you mind restating what we're trying to do with our zoning text amendment?
It's in the amendment. The purpose of the amendment is to establish a density requirement in the commercial zoning district for residential development. It would only apply to residential development, and it would have put in a maximum density of dwelling, eight dwelling units per acre. It doesn't affect commercial development, it only applies to residential structures. Let's say you have a multi-tenant building, townhouses, condos, whatever, whatever you, you know, they would be limited to eight units per acre. I don't know whether, how that would be, how you would equate that to the number of bedrooms in a building, it all, it all kind of depends on how they would propose it. But right now, there is no limit on the number of dwelling units that they could have on a commercial property. So, by putting in eight, you, you're putting in a limit.
Lots of limits because of septic and all the other, all the restrictions of lot coverage and so forth. You couldn't do 100 units on, on that parcel, for instance.
I didn't say 100.
Oh, Matt did.
I said 100.
I would just ask Mike, since it's a critical situation.
Now, David, this is not really a town hall, so I need to kind of rein you in just a little bit. I, I did give you a little rein, because, you know, I love you.
Well, I was on the planning board.
And you were on the planning board with me for years, so we have a relationship. But, so, could you just kind of try to stay in the lane?
I'll stop now and just, I would ask if Mike would address what Wes just said in regard to his property, because that's really what's at stake.
Okay. And I felt like I needed to address the problem, because I didn't have the ability at one point, to put 10 units per acre, if I wanted to. I didn't have the ability at one point to, if I did residential, to do 60%, 60% of the block, which is not correct at that time. So, there's a lot of coverage at one point that I could do for residential, what on commercial property was 60%. What's on the most narrow spectrum is 40%. And so, okay, we're establishing a 8 residential, usually half-years ago, 10. So, I'm just saying, okay, what's, I understand you just want to unify the rules, but I'm just saying, well, is there any other intent to deal with this? Is it changing anything? That's all I'm saying. Or changing anything else, all we're exactly planning. I know there's a lot of people around, like, you know, stuff in here, and there is a lot of complaints, but it's understood that what would happen eventually.
So, I guess, Wes, the question Mike has is about lot coverage? I'm trying to understand the question. He's saying that, if I'm understanding correctly, his commercially zoned property, if he were to build residential units now, before this text amendment, he would be subject to what lot coverage for those residential developments?
40%. For residential development.
For residential.
If it's commercial, it's 60%.
And if you were to develop your property for commercial, you would be subject to the 60% lot coverage?
Or 67%. In the previous statement.
This is more of a field of actual knowledge. I'm not sure if these brick houses right here, or if they're on channels, like concrete, whether they're subject to 60%, 60%, 40%.
I don't either.
They look like 60%.
Okay, what's different with the commercial side? A lot of asphalt, basic buildings, 60% compared to trying to put up something at least a residential or housing or something. The square footage of it. Why is it that different?
It, it.
I'm not asking.
Yeah, I'm, I think I'm gonna just have to rein this in.
Let me make one comment. It's pretty odd, well, the lot coverage is already stated in, in the amendment, it stays at that 40%, but the, it doesn't change, it's the existing language. And it's pretty rare to have that written that way. You go to other townships, it follows whatever the commercial lot coverage is typically. It doesn't shift it because of the use shifting. And it appears that it was written reactively to something that might have happened. So, that's a. And, and we were trying to tiptoe into this in seeing as all the other dimensional requirements for matching the RS8 district, it seemed to follow the density should match the RS8. I will say, you've definitely given me room to pause. And I'm tempted to say, as Elizabeth always does, we can, I think some of this, all of this needs to be looked at in a more holistic manner, from commercial design standards to what our desired use of our commercial district is with our land use plan update, personally. But to, to not make this take longer than it needs to, I'm probably comfortable moving forward with the amendment as written.
As am I. Okay, so, there's a motion on, no, I withdrew my motion. So, may I have a motion, please, to address this ZTA 2204?
I'll make a motion to adopt the planning board's recommendation of ZTA 2204.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Lots.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, staff. Okay. So, next. Any other general public comments? Somehow I lost my piece of paper. Tommy Carroll, would you like to speak to us?
Good evening, counsel. I have a, I have a recommendation on the, on your, it's well-known here that I don't like the traffic mitigation plan, but that's okay. What I'd like to do is offer a recommendation to make the plan a little bit better. First of all, Chief Lindbacher and Col, thanks for standing up about the, the safety and the response times. Thank you for that. I might, I don't understand the, if you're, if you're convinced that you want to stop Hick, close off Hickory, remember the response time for the service vehicles in that stretch of, of street there, from Hickory going up to Hillcrest. That's a dangerous spot there. Okay, so the fire, the fire trucks and the police cars have to get into that left lane. They're gonna have, coming on traffic, and then they get up to that hill, and then they're gonna have to go to, to, to Hillcrest. I might recommend, if you're hell-bent, if I'm allowed to say that, on closing Hickory, you might want to have a swinging gate. And I've seen. And I've seen them in my studies from trying to prepare for the traffic mitigation, that you can have an actual swinging gate with a pivot. So in the winter, that gate can be lifted out, and during the summer, when you have it, it swings open. And that gate would only be accessible by the state. Now, it involves someone getting out of the truck and getting to it, but at least that gives them access up to the dunes. If you put what they call a Jersey Wall there, the trucks, unless it's an old truck and the chief's going to run it down, you know, that at least gives you access up to those dunes if you really want to close off Hickory. The other concern is, and then just give it access to the service vehicles. The other one is up on Ocean Boulevard, what you'll have up there, I used to know the distance, it's from Dogwood all the way up to Hillcrest, that's where the rat runners go, and that's where the speed is. That's where the speed is. You really should consider putting a local traffic-only sign at least up at the corner of Dogwood and is that Ocean Boulevard that runs right along the ocean, right up there to keep people out of there? Because if you close off, that's a long stretch. People are going to, if you close off Ocean Boulevard at the tower, people are going to go up to Trout, and they're going to go up to Porpoise, they're going to get on to Ocean Boulevard, and that's a run, because my employees used it all the time. That was the secret back way. So you might want to consider putting the local traffic, at least something, right at Ocean Boulevard at Dogwood to keep that run going up to Hillcrest. Okay? There you have it. And I'll get back to the rest of you on my other plan someday, I'll keep on working on it.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Council business. I'll start, because I have something to talk about this. So Earth Week was April 3rd to April 30th, and there was a lot of activity coordinated between our Southern Shore Civic Association, our Chickahawke Property Owners Association, and the Town of Southern Shores. There was a lot of volunteers that were involved in the efforts to do some cleanup of the properties owned by those associations. And the weather was very cooperative, and we had a celebration at the end with a food truck at Hillcrest. And I just want to thank everyone who was involved, particularly all the folks with the town, who did all the, or doing the heavy lifting, getting all of the debris carried away, and all those wonderful volunteers. It was, I had a lot of fun meeting people, talking to people I hadn't talked to before, and we got a lot of work done. So that was fun. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Earth Week. Matt?
No comment. Thank you.
Okay. Paula?
Well, I'll just piggyback on that and say that the Flattop Tour was also, I've never seen so many people at that tour before, and I thought it was a great community event and really showed off some unique architecture in our town, so it was well-done.
Very good. Mark?
No, I'm good.
Leo?
Yes, I got to give you an update on tourism board. A couple things, the tourism board approved the resolution in support of the Mid-County Bridge. They also are entertaining signing on to the Amicus with us. So I think, Ben, you've been in contact with Jay.
In the process of that, we're playing tag.
Okay, well, then, that takes care of that particular portion of it. We talk about the tourists and the impact that we're having. Occupancy, this is for just the month of February, was up 1%. Current year-to-date is up 25, and they're starting to see a little adjustment in those numbers. But when you go back to 2019 for February, it was 6,400,000. This year it was 17,000, so you know, there's a hell of a difference in the volume. Meals collections doing very well. February was up 44%, and the current year is 20%. So that takes care of that part. But there is another little initiative that the tourism board is going to be embarking on in 22, 23, as to the, here's a statement I'm going to read that was part of this presentation. "The impact of tourism can no longer be measured solely in economic terms. We must also measure success against the well-being of the destinations." So there's going to be a little more discussion, there's an outside consultant going to work with the board to figure out what we can do to improve the relationship between the guests and the residents. So it's called destination marketing versus destination management. And here's one last statement, and there'll be surveys and everything go out that surround everybody in the county on this project. "We must be thoughtful about the quality of our visitor experience can be balanced with the quality of life residence." So we're finally, the board's finally going to be addressing how we balance those two issues, which have been a challenge, because we've always measured the economic impact. And that's what they were charged to do, is bring people here to stay overnight. So there's going to be a little change, and the community will be involved in it. That's my report.
That's great. Thank you, Leo. So our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 17. And hearing no other comments or concerns or questions, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.